Okay, it is six thirty and I see that we have a quorum, so I'm gonna call the meeting of the city council of Hillsborough to order. And see, I guess the first thing is gonna announce that we're going to amend the agenda to add a five-minute executive session at the end of the business items, so after the consideration of forward invoices. Alright, so I guess we're gonna start with the approval of the consent agenda. And the first item on the consent agenda is vouchers totaling one hundred and five thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and eleven cents. Did everybody get a copy of the vouchers? Okay. And are there any questions regarding the vouchers? Alright, and then next is the minutes from our May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four meeting and the special meeting on May twenty-ninth. Did everybody receive a copy of those minutes? Okay, any questions regarding changing the minutes at all? Alright, hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Okay, Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilman by seconds. Oh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, and next is the first opportunity for public comment.
That's okay.
So, nobody in the public wants to? No, okay, alrighty, and there's no one online other than the press, so next we're going to move to the Haven mayor, Adam Wright, and Haven's Public Works Director, Steve Carmichael. Like the approach the council.
Thank you for having us. So, on May nineteenth, which is a Sunday evening, we got hit with eighty to ninety mile-per-hour winds and took out some large trees and about fifteen utile. Our city staff at the time is a three-person staff. We have some fairly decent equipment to do routine maintenance, but we are not a lineman crew. And we got on the phone, Steve here got on the phone and contacted KPP and got the ball rolling of getting some line crews and everything to come in and help us out. And you guys graciously sent us some line, lineman crews to help out. And we were actually back up and running within, I believe, thirty-eight hours, you guys. And that was faster than our EverG customers. So, I would like to say I do have a card for you guys that was signed by our council. Thank you. We would have not been able to accommodate that if we wanted to add your guys' help. So, from mayor to the council, we've been very grateful to you guys.
And as Public Works Director, I was very overwhelmed. I'd been in the position for like two weeks.
Sure.
Been working for the city in public work for seven years, but two weeks as Public Works Director, and it was pretty overwhelming. And to make the call to KPP, James Ginn said, "I'll get the ball rolling," and he called me thirty minutes later and says, "I've got crews coming from Hillsborough." And I mean, it happened quick, and they were there first thing in the morning. I think we had two of your crews, two crews came, and they were awesome. Great guys to work with, represented your city extremely well. And professional, and they knew we were overwhelmed, and they were just laid back and said, "Don't worry, we got it." And it was what we needed at that time drastically. And we very much appreciate you guys letting me come, help us out. We'd have been in a world of hurt without them.
All your staff, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Wonderful cruise.
For having us. Any more?
Thank you.
Name is Baron.
Thanks.
Right, so next we're gonna move to the annual department head presentation with Jesse Hebert, Hillsborough Police Department Police Chief.
Well, I put a PowerPoint together because it's a crutch. I've got much of the folks speaker.
Oh.
I'm kidding.
Uh huh.
Doesn't taste like it.
Fool these people, that's just not right.
So, I wanted to have something a little different this year to where we don't just focus on statistical data and cases and numbers. So, we're gonna start off with a little bit of fun stuff. So, if you look over here on the screen, we've got some photos of our officers doing fun stuff. This is a lead class this year at the elementary school. We actually taught three classes to fifth graders, totaling fifty-three students. This is actually David's second year doing lead, but prior to that, we taught there, and he had done that since, since two thousand and one. So, we're in and around the schools, strong presence in schools. That's one example of that. Trying, I'm gonna hit on each, each one of the guys. So, this is McCarty. Dwayne came to work for us in August of last year. Tremendous amounts of experience, and some of that experience focuses around working sex crimes and crimes against children. And I can tell you, those are cases that no cop wants to work, and he is excellent at working with them. Definitely took on a leadership role, and when he came to Hillsborough, he started working right away. Sadly, he had some cases he needed to work right when he got here, and he knocked him out of the park. Very great job, so.
Share this. So, everybody online can see it too.
Next picture is actually the reward that he got, or the award that he got from heart to heart. And heart to heart is, uh, I don't wanna call it an association, but anytime we deal with, with child sex crimes, crimes involving youth, we're going to heart to heart. Dwayne is very active, working with them, DCF, and this was their acknowledgement of his excellent work. And so, I wanted everyone to be able to see that. Big Truck Night, we have a blast doing that. This, anytime we get the chance to mingle with children and their parents out of a law enforcement setting, I think is critical. It's critical to building trust and creating relationships. You know, everyone, everyone sees a cop in a cop car, maybe some flashy lights once in a while, but it's nice just to engage the public with a handshake, covering book, a sucker, and just let them see us in a friendly environment. So, we really enjoy Big Truck Night. Some of the trainings that we've done and public engagements, this is a, a couple photographs of an active shooter training that I put on at the courthouse in Marion. Shows the crowd there, and that's actually the courtroom where I put it on. And this is photograph of our range master, David Funk, discharging two twenty-three cartridges within the courtroom. And so, the purpose of that is an active shooting training, depending on what level of training we do, we actually have active scenarios going on, where you don't just sit there and listen to someone talk, it's hands-on training. This was a hands-on training exercise. So, at the sound of gunfire, which would have been that rifle going off, the employees within that courthouse then decided, do we lock down in place or do we evacuate the building? Now, this, of course, is a stage photograph, but that, that is what we were doing there. We, we shot that rifle off on every floor of the courthouse and then specifically in the courtroom, so everyone could hear that. And a side note, the employees of that courthouse did an excellent job in that training of it, excellent, so. This here is a photograph of a new PBT, Troy Wells, Regional KDOT Law Enforcement Liaison, provide us that new PBT. And on behalf of AAA, we all carry PBTs, preliminary breath testers in our, in our vehicles, basically for testing breath alcohol content during DUI investigations, but very nice to get, to get one given to us, so. Stopsticks, something also we were able to acquire through the Kansas Department of Transportation. We're taking part in a couple special traffic enforcement events. All the full-time units excluding mine, all the patrol units are now equipped with stopsticks. Stopstick is a device that we throw across the pathway of a vehicle that we're pursuing. They've got basically little metal straws that, that are in a carrier. The tire drives over it, the straw goes up in it, slowly lets the air out of the tire, reduces the speed of the vehicle by them driving on flat tires. We got those all loaded up now in the pursuit vehicles at no cost to the city. Flexible rifle armor, was able to acquire this through a grant from the Hillsborough Community Foundation and also a private donation. The difference between that carrier that you see right there and the one that we, you always see us where, they might look the same, but they're not. That one there stops rifle rounds, so two twenty-three, the rifle that David was showing, AK forty-seven, a three oh eight hunting high-powered rifles. The reason we need something like that is the regular vests that we wear stop nothing but pistol, pistol and shotgun. So, if you're going into an active shooter call, or just a call where you know there's potential for firearm play, you need to put on a rifle vest. That way, for one, it, it gets us in the fight longer, we can stay longer, we can protect the public. It doesn't do us any good to go into a scenario and take a hit and be out of the game. So, it was able to get a hold of one of those in each vehicle. So, it doesn't matter who's driving the car, they get sent to that call, they're in a pursuit vehicle, they're gonna have a carrier. So, those are about two thousand dollars apiece. Automated external defibrillator, just, just acquired these using opioid pharmaceutical sediment money. That's out of a multi-billion dollar lawsuit, which that is a couple years old now, but we've had some funds building up and was able to find a way to spend that. I think this is a great addition to equipment in our patrol vehicles. We have responded to opioid overdose calls before. Had we needed an AED, we would have been in trouble. Now, we're equipped and was able to equip without spending taxpayer money, so. Worked out perfect. Alright, now the boring stuff, calls for service. This is the statistical data pulled out of our daily logs. So, it's manually pulled out of our logs. Every day, we do a day shift log, an evening shift log, and an administrative logs. There's three logs per every shift, and someone, Randy Brazel, actually went through every one of these logs and come up with this information. So, hundred ninety-four service rendered, service is rendered. You can see there what, what that consists of. We do a lot of welfare checks, and it's fine to do welfare checks, but a lot of welfare checks. Someone has hurt from someone, cell phone drops, whatever, EMS assists, whether that would be helping someone get into a building, lifting, property disputes, but yet it's not criminal, we'll show up for that. Lot of fingerprinting, people need background checks, civil standbys, child seat inspection. John Hubert is our certified child seat inspector. He's done nine installations and inspected seven vehicles, but works out pretty nice. Four hundred and ten criminal complaints, that number seems kinda high. Keep in mind that these complaints include cases or situations that there is no case actually cut going through the court system. Someone had a criminal complaint. There's eighty-nine criminal cases that were opened that went to the county attorney's office for prosecution. A hundred and eleven are incident reports. The difference between a criminal case or a Kansas standard offense report and an incident report, one goes to prosecution, the other one's stored in-house. So, there's our criminal complaints for the year, four hundred and ten. Eleven hundred sixty-seven investigations and administration. You can see what that all consists of. A lot of nine-one-one hangups, a lot of times that's weather-related. In fact, I wouldn't be surprised if we've had a few of them from this, from this weather incident. For some reason, the water gets in the old phone lines and nine-one-one gets, gets called. Mental health assist, that's one that we've had to add, it was added last year. Find ourselves in a situation where we're responding to a lot of those calls, they're quite uncomfortable, but we try to work our way through those. A lot of civil questions, people come in, ask questions about civil disputes, and we're, you know, we're, we don't like to give a lot of direction, but just enough to get them to another place where they can get additional information, so. Traffic complaints, four hundred and four. Those include driving complaints, which the big ones are reckless speeding in July, parking complaints, that's both public and private, we respond to both of them. Accident investigations, we cut thirty-nine accident, official accident reports in that timeframe. Traffic stops, two hundred and ninety of that, two ninety, two hundred and forty-seven warnings we issued, and forty-three citations. So, we are a department that would rather educate than write a ticket right out of the gate. Eight hundred and seven public relations and additional responsibility entries in the logs. I told you before, very active in the school zones, we are. Morning, noon time, afternoon, we're trying to patrol the school zones, we're going in the schools. Without having an SRO, School Resource Officer, we try to get into the schools and make sure the students know that we're available and that we're in there. Our mandatory forty minimum hours training, officer's going to training non-stop. Gun officer that does our computer tech, he's maintaining a lot within our agency. Of course, our instruction, court proceedings, and public engagements, so eight hundred and seven entries. We serve on boards, County Peace Arms Association, we actually, the president of that is one of our officers. Prairie View Law Enforcement Advisory Board, Marin County Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, which David Funk sets on as part of lead. Marin County Local Emergency Planning Committee, Emergency Response Leadership, Multidisciplinary Task Force, and the County Drug Task Force. So, we are very active outside of the borders of Hillsborough. Obviously, we serve it on boards. Nice to meet you. Alright, driving under the influence, everyone wants to know about that. So, we had nine official DUI, four of whom are drug-related, five of them alcohol-related. Listed drug cases, fifteen for prosecution, five of those involved methamphetamine. Twelve marijuana or THC products, which would be edibles, could be concentrates. Fentanyl, two of those, pharmaceutical wine, cocaine, three, methylene deoxymethamphetamine in one, and psilocybin, two. So, now, obviously, if you add those up, they don't equal fifteen, so some of those cases involve multiple substances. This is a fun one. Hundred and eighty-eight animal control, mostly dogs, but sometimes they include a snake, a raccoon, skunk, an alberta bat, a cow, chicken, possum, underdello, or horse. And we totaled thirty-four hundred and sixty circus calls. Was it fourteen point eight seven?
We're close, man.
Thank you.
Pretty close.
Questions?
Uh, you've mentioned active shooter training. Do you do other active shooter training at like Timber and?
Anyone who wants to, we go. I've been out of the county many, many times, and all I gotta do is ask. We've done it in local businesses. To answer your question, we've been in all the churches within the city of Hillsborough. We've been in the churches outside of Hillsborough. We've been in the larger businesses here in town like Barkman and Container. Courthouses in the eight judicial districts, every one of them, but all you gotta do is ask. And, and we'll pick the level. If you want just the lecture, we'll do just the lecture. If you wanna step up and go hands-on, we can do that, so. Yeah, decided to do it. Any other questions? Excellent. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You guys keep up the good work.
I'll let you keep that question.
Got it.
And so, now we're going to move into our business items. And the first item of business would be consideration of ordinance thirteen ninety-four, establishing licensing for food trucks within the city.
So, yeah, we made that change that was requested about self-reporting misdemeanors and felonies. So, that's been added to there. You can kinda see everything else is, nothing has changed from the previous discussion, but that, that was added in after our previous discussion. So, unless there's something else you'd like to see recommending adoption, thirteen ninety-four.
Are any questions or discussions regarding ordinance thirteen ninety-four? Okay, hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve ordinance thirteen ninety-four, establishing licensing for food trucks within the city as proposed by that. Councilman by moves, is there a second? Okay, I got bar second. I get one in some time. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just trying to clarify.
Okay. Sorry, it was those three ayes, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, you passed it, so.
Alright, so motion carries. Um, next business item is consideration of city health insurance for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five plan year.
Okay, so we tabled this at the last meeting, uh, because we were waiting to hear if we got into the KMIT plan, uh, the KAHP, KMIT Association Health Plan. Uh, we did receive word after, right after the meeting that we were able to get into that. Um, and so, as we kinda looked through that, we feel like this is probably the best long-term option for us. So, to kinda recap how our insurance works on the health insurance side, we have an umbrella policy, uh, which is what this is. And then the city has a buy-up policy, which we self-insure, uh, to get it up to the, to where the levels that we wanna make it. So, we have control over all that underneath. This is just the umbrella, essentially, so. So, some things to think about with the, the KMIT plan. Uh, it does run on a calendar year, not a plan year. So, effectively, what we'd be doing is going on eighteen months, uh, giving people credit for eighteen months instead of twelve. So, we're actually extending a little bit. Uh, the estimated cost of that's about thirty-seven thousand, which sounds like a lot of money, but it does give us a, an additional amount of coverage for people to make that transition. The good news is, though, that with moving over to the KHAP plan, we actually reduce our overall maximum liability by roughly, actually a little bit more than that. So, the absolute max that our plan could ever get, everybody maxed out there is eighty-four thousand dollars. Right now, it's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, almost a hundred and thirty. Um, so, we're actually doing pretty well, even with that, uh, be able to make that cover with our existing reserve fund, which is over, it's about a hundred and twenty-one thousand right now. So, I know it gets a lot, pretty complicated to throw a lot of numbers, so stop me if you need me to. Um, one of the things with K, KMIT is this is sort of a long-term move. Uh, there's an expectation when you join into the pool that you're, you're willing to be a member of the pool. Uh, we have been a member of the KMIT pool for a very long time. You'll see all of our little KMIT stars up there for our workman's comp insurance up on the shelf. Uh, we've been a member of KMIT for a very long time. Um, I think the expectation is if we went into this, that we would, we would stay into this, uh, unless there was a really compelling reason not to. Um, I think that it gives us some stability because it's a much larger group than we are. Uh, in the last few years, we've seen some pretty wild swings in, in premium, premium amounts that we would have to pay, renewals. And so, you know, if we go this way, it's a little bit more of a one-way street, but I think ultimately it's, it's gonna cap us in our liability. Uh, KMIT plan has a, an agreed-upon contractual, uh, contractual cap, their rate can't go up more than fifteen percent each year with Blue Cross Blue Shield for the first five years of their program. So, even in that scenario, we're still pretty much, we're better off, even if it went up fifteen percent. I would say in talking with them, the KMIT administrator, that they're actually thinking they're gonna be flat this year, because they've had a really good year. Uh, they're anticipating the renewals to be flat, so ultimately, I think we're gonna be flat for the next year, so. Um, and we also get to have a representative on the board for KMIT, the health plan anyway. And so, that's an opportunity for us to kinda direct the plan, at least we have a voice in that. Whereas if we go with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, we, it's a black box. We don't know what happens. They don't tell us anything, they just give us renewal, so. Um, so that's kinda, those are sort of the, the things to consider with that. There's a little bit more, more of a one-way thing, but it's, you know, the liability kinda matches out, I think. Uh, we also self, self-fund our dental plan. We've been doing that. This is our, this will be our third year with that. Uh, we are tracking higher than we anticipated this year, but according to people, our, our representatives and our consultants there, uh, there's usually one bad year in five years. Every five years, you have one bad one. They feel like this last year was probably our bad year. And so, it's probably gonna be leveled back out, is what they're anticipating. Uh, so, we're saying, let's, let's just kinda keep it where it is right now and try it for another year and see if that becomes too much in the next year. If we see something similar to this year, then we could always look at going back into the market and getting insurance for secondary provider, not doing self-insurance. So, those are kinda the benefits of that. One of the benefits that we offer our employees is tele-doctor benefit. Um, you can call in twenty-four-seven to this doc line. It's no out-of-pocket expense. Uh, it works pretty well. I've, I've gotten stuff when I've been traveling for my kids, they've been sick, so. Does work really well. We haven't used it. Nobody has used it in the last year on our plan. So, what we decided was, well, we, we would recommend moving over to a medical transportation insurance. Um, so what that is, is a, it's a gap insurance for what differences between what our insurance would pay and what you would pay as a person using it if you were to use an ambulance, air ambulance, ground ambulance, transfer, very expensive. Um, and a lot of times, insurance doesn't cover a lot of that. Uh, what this policy would do for roughly the same amount of money, uh, would be to cover that difference for employees. So, uh, we'd be swapping out the tele-doctor for that emergency, at least that's what we'll recommend for the emergency transport insurance, so. I mentioned that KHP or KH, KAHP, too many acronyms. Uh, there, it's, it's basically a three percent in, a premium increase from where we're at. We'll have a rate change again in January as we switch over to the, to the new plan year, uh, which will be calendar year. And so, we think that one's gonna be flat, so really, this is sort of a, a three percent increase for eighteen months is how we're viewing it. Um, you can kinda look at what we had there. We put together last year in order to get us back on track to the, the amount of premium that our employees are supposed to be contributing based on our policy. We broke it down into two steps, and so, last year, we took the first step, which is what you'll see in that chart, it's that second column. Uh, and then this next step would be what we were proposing last year. Uh, with this renewal, we feel like we can stay on that track and not really have to do anything beyond what we had told employees we were gonna do last year. So, that's a great thing. Uh, it's, they, they know this is coming, they knew this was coming, they didn't know if there was gonna be anything extra. We were able to, to make that work with the plan we've got and not make anything extra. So, we're, we're pretty excited, I'm pretty excited about that. I think that's a great, great thing. Uh, for employees, we're able to keep benefits good. I think we'll be having a, a good swap out on that tele-doctor for the medical, uh, transport insurance. Uh, so that's what we're gonna recommend tonight, is to go forward with the KMIT plan or the KAHP plan. Uh, we're gonna also recommend extending our plan year when we do that to eighteen months, so we're gonna be going a little longer. So, that, that's kinda what we're doing. So, in order to do that, there's really a, a couple of different action steps that we would ask today. So, um, if you're, if you're game with making that move, we would want you to make a motion and an action to join the KMIT Association Health Plan at the five thousand deductible plan. Um, I'm gonna recommend appointing me, unless somebody else wants to do it, to the cage, to the board. Most people don't wanna do that and don't understand the health insurance, but I will do that, that's no problem. I don't mind doing it, I know all those people. Um, and then I would also recommend that we set the health insurance rates as we have listed in the table for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-four twenty-five. I think, well, I, yeah, you probably wanna do three, yeah.
Okay.
Since there's three separate. So.
Okay.
And that, I was, I was just saying, he does, okay, I was just thinking, okay.
Oh, are we gonna have to redo?
No.
Okay. Alright. So, are there any questions or discussion regarding what Matt said?
So, did you say staff is aware of it and, and the feedback has been at least not negative, but maybe some positive or?
Uh, we haven't really talked, we, we've talked to him about the rates. We haven't talked to him about the change in the tele-doctor. Um, I don't really anticipate much pushback, given that they haven't used it.
Kind of forgotten about it, actually.
But yeah, I, I, we haven't had any pushback from the insurance side either. You know, we have this third-party administrator, and I think by and large, everyone's done really well with that. Um, I don't know, they probably talked to Danielle more on that if there's issues.
We haven't had a lot of complaints about the insurance that we are currently, no. And we're staying with Blue Cross, you know, coverage is the same, so. Providers, providers, we've, Matt and I have met with insurance and confirmed that the providers remain the same. Uh, prescription coverage, we've, we've checked as many boxes as we can to ensure that those benefits remain the same. And so, we're just working for the best rate that we can, and once we've got that, then we can stick with it, like Matt said, for the long haul.
So, I guess just to sum it up. So I guess just to sum it up, benefits are remaining largely the same, only differences, no more teledoc. But if they need to use an ambulance service, part of that will be covered.
Yeah, it'll be covered, yeah.
Okay, alright.
And then the rates are, are what we told them they would be last year, so the only one that really changes the employee spouse and the reason why is that was way out of whack. Just to take a little history lesson, we had, uh, back in twenty twenty-one, we had eight retirements. And so when we hired people back in, our health plan completely changed, the, the group changed totally. Uh, and so what we were paying then, uh, for the employee spouse was different than what it ended up being as we moved, but we never really changed it. Um, and so in order to get that back on track, we sort of had to do this two-step thing, so. That's why it's, that's one that, that is one that's going to jump more, it's a hundred dollars a month, uh, but people are aware of that, we talked about it last year, so. Yeah, it's, it's, and everybody else receives really not much, and then of course we pay a hundred percent of an employee-only plan, so.
Any other discussion? Okay, uh, hearing none, uh, so it'll be a motion to join KMIT.
Health and, uh, Association Health Plan, yes.
Okay.
At the five hun, at the five thousand deductible plan. A lot, yeah, sorry.
So.
Just to make sure that we're in the right one.
Okay, so, um, would anyone like to motion to join the KMIT? What?
Association.
KMIT Association Health Plan at the five thousand.
Deductible.
Deductible plan.
There you go. Got it.
Alright. Okay, Councilman Jorgensen motions, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. And the second motion. Okay, the second motion would be to appoint Matt Stiles as our representative for the KMIT board.
I would say, I would say to, to phrase that as the city administrator.
Oh, okay.
Just in case you don't like me in the couple of weeks, that guy, that guy.
I don't know, I feel like we get rid of you, should still be able to. Alright, so a motion to appoint the city, the city administrator as our representative on the board. Make that motion, Councilman by motions, is there a second? Councilman McCarthy seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Was there a third motion?
Yeah, we wanted to set the health insurance rates.
So what's the chances, okay. Alright, and then the third motion, would someone like to motion to set the rates as those stated in the chart? For, by, for twenty twenty-five, make that, but Councilman by motions, second. Councilman McCarthy seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, yep. Glad to have you representing us on the board. So the third business item would be consideration of a grant agreement with Kansas Corporation Commission Energy Efficiency. And conserve, conservation block grant program for thirty thousand eight hundred and five dollars to replace streetlights.
Okay, I'm actually going to turn this over to Callie Arnold, who's the author of this grant, she's, uh, the administrator.
This is her first city council.
It is, yes.
Actually, no, I was here in.
Oh, it's true, yeah, it's true.
I'm from here, so. We have to do this for civic engagements. But, hi, if you don't know me, I'm Callie, I'm the, I'm Matt's assistant. And I'm in the process of getting certified to be a grant writer, so I'm hoping to bring in lots more grants like this in the future. Um, but great news, we got awarded some money, so. Um, it was an opportunity for, for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, um, from the Department of Energy. Um, through the Kansas Corporation Commission, and, um. It was a long process, I had to acquire a lot of information, a lot of different people were contacted, um, specifically from the electric department. We never heard the end of it for quite a few weeks, and, um, but it turns out they were very helpful. I got lots of statistical input. Um, about our current high-pressure sodium street lighting that we, that is sporadic around town. Um, and how much energy it uses and, um, how much they cost us every year, and, um. I got a quote from Todd Helmer specifically about how much, um. LED streetlight, streetlight heads, um, would cost, um, so I could figure out a budget and. Try to get as much money as I could from Kansas Corporation Commission. And that was a lot of, it was a lot of general research, it was a lot of calling, um, KCC in particular, just. Asking very specific, um, editorial questions, um, I wanted to get everything right. Lots of directions from Matt, because I've been doing this longer than I have, um, yeah, um. So basically, this project. We've been awarded thirty thousand eight hundred and five dollars, and that's based on the budget we created around the costs we. Figured, um, for how much it would be. They're very, the KCC, KCC was very particular about. Um, what, what they wanted their funds to go to, equipment only. Um, no additional stuff, uh, nothing to cushion anything, and we did not do that, um. The lights in particular, we tried to focus on, when I say we, it was me and the electric department, Billy mostly and. And Todd and, um, lots of expertise from all sides. We wanted to focus on public safety around town and keeping students safe, um, and just residents and children. Um, so they located, they looked at a, a physical map for me and located specific areas. In town that still needed replacement, um, from high-pressure sodium to LED. And in particular, we're replacing sixty-seven. Sixty-seven HPS lights, twenty-seven on Adam Street. I think eleven on Lincoln, ten on, uh, the Sports Complex Road. Eight along. Oh dear, oh, the, um, I think that's A Street, just south of the, the elementary school. And then. Six along, uh, Jefferson and B, and then five along the alleyway behind the splash pad. So we figured that all of these sort of targeted, um, areas that were frequented by parents, children. Um, you know, very, and we thought that would make it, pull up people's heartstrings a little bit. And it's been a little, little, yeah, more eager to give us money, and it worked, so. The, um. The funds are. Like the project has to happen within a year. Um, I know the specific dates are in the agreement, I'm not quite sure off the top of my head what they are, but it's, it's a full year. And we have to get the project done and the funds used by that time, um, Todd and Billy assured me that. They get it done, no problem, within a matter of months, honestly, um, so yeah, um, the. It's basically just requested of the council that the, um, grant agreement be approved and. I think Mayor Lou has to sign it, so.
They, sounded, did Odd and all them give you idea of when they'd be able to get parts, like?
Um. No, um. I'm not sure if they've been ordered yet, uh, I don't think they have, um, and, um. But we assumed that once they were ordered, they, we have them here within maybe a month.
Okay.
And then after that, it would be two or three months.
Wrinkles with this, it's, it's got the Build America by America products, uh, stipulations in there, so we have to certify that these lights are going to be. Made in America, uh, or at least that the provider of those lights is saying that they are made in America, so. We'll have, we'll have to get them to sign off on that, um, and then there's a couple other kind of quirks with the wages, there's Davis Bacon wages requirements in there. Uh, we're going to be fine with that, because we pay our people more than the Davis Bacon fee trades. Uh, and we're doing all the install, there's no match, uh, this is, it's all just great money.
Are these? Are these, is this, um, are these new? Uh, has this been done before, or is this an initial first-time move to LED?
No, they've replaced H, uh, some HPS, uh, lights around town to LED already. I, I've been told that, um, some of the. The HPS lights require a whole lot more maintenance than LEDs do, and I've been told from Todd. It was a few weeks ago, um, that the HPS parts that they regularly order to replace certain lights. Are going, uh, out of stock, uh, and are now, they're now having to realize, oh, we need to replace. All of the HPS lights in town to LEDs. Um, and that's well over four hundred lights, I believe.
So roughly what percentage would we be after this project is done?
He said it was around forty, forty percent, yeah, we've done quite a few change-outs, but as Callie says, there's still, I think.
There's a lot.
Three hundred that we have it, so.
Focusing on public safety at first, we just heard from Chief Bieber, but I think that's. Probably a good way to, to start.
Yes.
Do we have any type of timeline for when we would like to get all the LED lights replaced, or is it just kind of?
That's, sounds like another project. Um. I'm not sure, that's a Todd question, I think, um, but I'd be happy to help in that initiative, whatever way, so. If it's more of this, then it's more of this, so.
So is there any other questions for Callie? Uh, would anyone like to motion to accept? The Kansas Corporation Commission Energy Efficient and Conservation Block Grant. For the stated amount of thirty thousand eight hundred and five dollars to replace the HPS. Streetlights to LED.
I'll second.
Alright, Councilman Jorgensen motions and Councilman by seconds, uh, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, or any opposed? Alright, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much.
So it looks like the next business item is consideration of the purchase of a five hundred. KVA transformer at a cost not to exceed thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir, so this is a, a requirement for, uh, USD four-ten's upgrade for their HVAC system. They need a five hundred KVA transformer, uh, it's actually a different voltage than what they have currently. Uh, it's because the HVAC system is running on a little bit of different voltage, um. One of the things with this one is, uh, any, our policy is that when they, they purchase these things, or we need these things, that the person reimburses us for the purchase of this. Transformer, it's just a city policy, uh, they're aware of that, they, we have had that conversation before they actually went to the bonds election, so they knew that was going to happen. We gave them kind of a ballpark price, I think this is actually right around there, if not a little bit below what we had told them, I think we quoted them forty thousand initially. So, and with the lead times on these, we've actually put this order in the queue already, it's not officially ordered, but it's in the queue. Uh, so what we're seeking tonight is ratification of that to, to go ahead and order it, to the formal order for this. Um, uh, superintendent was pretty on board with that, he actually wanted to push the go button ahead of time. Because the prices have been changing every fifteen to sixteen days, or sixteen, fifteen, twenty days. Um, and so we're kind of right at the tail end of that, we're ready to go, we're in the queue, we're locked in. Um, I put in there as a, a not-to-exceed price of thirty-eight thousand, I figured like sales tax on this, I always. Want to double-check my math and give ourselves a little bit of room in case something changes. Um, but I think thirty-eight thousand not to exceed should be sufficient for this purchase, so that's what we're recommending to forward it today.
So, we have any questions from Matt, going in the transformer?
Or how are we able to get?
Thirty to forty weeks. They thought maybe they could get it a little quicker, and we have one that we could potentially put in temporarily to get it by, uh, while they're doing the install, but. It's not, it's not going to be, uh, no, it shouldn't. I think we'll be able to get something in place that, they'll be able to use that HVAC on their timeline, whatever their timeline is, so. This kind of lined up with that.
Great, there's no further questions from Matt, someone like to motion to. Uh, but ratify.
You can just approve the purchase.
Okay, just to approve the purchase of the five hundred KVA transformer at a cost not to exceed thirty-eight thousand. Councilman McCarthy motions, is there a second? Councilman by seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, uh, the motion carries. Alright, our next business item is consideration of forward invoices totaling two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Yeah, this was, uh, service work on a police cruiser, uh, McCarthy's police cruiser and then a street truck. So totaling was the total, it was two, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Did everybody receive a copy of the invoice? Any questions or discussion? Uh, if there's no discussion, would someone like to motion to approve the forward invoice? Okay, Councilman Jorgensen motions. Councilman McCarthy seconds, all those in favor say aye. Oh, um, sorry, aye, uh, all of saying, opposed? Uh, the motion is approved. Alright, and then this brings us to the, uh, executive session that I announced at the beginning of the meeting, so.
One of you has to make the motion.
Okay. Alright, and I can.
You can do it.
Alright, I move that the city council recess into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Personnel pursuant to KSA seven-five dash four-three nineteen. Be one, for a period of five minutes, the meeting will conclude, will include the city, the city administrator and city attorney. The open meeting will resume at, when it goes seven-twenty-two, okay, we'll go at seven-twenty-two. The council by motion, Councilman McCarthy seconds, motion carries, and we will move into executive session. Alright, and the Hillsborough City Council is out of the executive session, and I'd like to note that no. Action was taken during that executive session. So now we're going to move into our Public Building Commission meeting.
My turn.
Alright, I move that we move the Hillsborough City Council into Public Building Commission. Does it need a motion for that, or we just move into it? Okay, did everybody receive minutes from the January two twenty twenty-four meeting?
My building commission.
Okay.
Oh, we have to.
Get to approve that.
We have to approve the minutes. Okay, I will accept a motion to approve the minutes from the January second twenty twenty-four meeting. Moves, is there a second? Councilman Carter? Do we have to do all, or is it just?
You can just do a voiceover on minutes.
All is in favor of approving the minutes from the January two twenty twenty-four meeting, uh, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it's approved. Alright, we have a consideration to submit a zoning request for the HCH property to be changed to HS zoning.
Thank you, sir, so, uh, as we approved that HS zoning district, which created the hospital zoning district. Uh, now it's time to move forward with rezoning that property. Uh, it's technically listed as the Public Building Commission's property, uh, we are the titled owner of the property under the agreement with. RHG, uh, who owns the building and operations of the hospital. Little bit complicated, if you'd like a primer on all that, I would refer you to Andrew, he could do that offline, uh. So what that, that zoning in that it's in right now is I two, um, and so what we would do is move it to, I wrote on there CS, but it's actually HS. Um, uh, in order to do that, well, I'd like to get permission from you as the building commission to do that. I've got permission from, uh, RHG, they've already signed off, but they're, they're in agreement. But they're, they're in agreement that we should move this zoning over, so they'll, they'll be a co-applicant on this. Um, application. And how that will work is it'll work like any other zoning change. It'll go through the planning commission. Uh, and then you'll get a chance to review it again as the city council. So, yeah, fun times. Um, so it's just sort of how that, that's going to work. Uh, with city-owned property, we waived the zoning fee request, which is fifty dollars. Uh, and then we'll just kind of move forward with the process there. Uh, we are at a point where I think we can hear this, probably still hear it at the June meeting. Uh, if not, we'll move it to the July meeting. Uh, there's not a huge pressing right now, but we'll, we'll get it in the process and get it. So. Uh, if you're amenable to that, we would request that you uh, move forward with approving us. Or making that request to rezone the hospital property. That's Public Building Commission.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Stott?
Um, so pretty much this isn't chaining, changing any functions. It's just rezoning the property from I two to H two.
Uh, HS, yes.
Sorry, yes, HS, okay.
Alright, hearing any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll accept a motion to submit a zoning request for the HCH property to be changed to HS zoning. For McCarty moves, is there a second? Jorgensen seconds. Do we need to roll call the vote? Okay, and then does the chair of the public, do I still take a vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and Andrew, sorry, and I should abstain, right? From, since I work at the hospital, so just uh.
Okay, we've got a motion from uh, Councilman McCarty and a second from Councilman Jorgensen. Uh, we'll go ahead and uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining. Statement abstain. Alright, we have a motion and a vote. To approve the HCH property to HS zoning. I don't know if I said any of that right, but.
Getting up, I think we got it here. Alright. I mean, you need to adjourn the.
Alright, uh, after the uh, I vote, I've um, adjourned the meeting of the Public Building Commission.
Okay.
You'll call this, this meeting back in the session.
Okay, so I'm going to call the Hillsborough City Council meeting back into session. And with that, we are going to move to the city administrator's report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Bowling Alley stuff, we kind of, we talked about that at the last meeting. I've reached out to the chair for HTC. We're meeting tomorrow afternoon. Well, tomorrow evening at five, uh, to kind of start the transition plan, working on that. Uh, had a brief conversation with some of the Tabor staff. I think we need to have a little bit more on that, just to kind of give it some more opportunity. Uh, to figure out what that looks like. And I'm hoping to sit down with Clint Seibel, who runs the Bowling Alley in the next week or two, just to get his opinion on how. That transition needs to look. Uh, but I think everything's kind of lining up to move forward there, so. Uh, Adam Street, we've got the contracts with Votsparga, all that's signed, ready to go. They're actually going to mobilize next week, which was awesome. Yeah, that's great. Our people are out there right now doing the water main work. You probably noticed that. It's uh, got a hole in the street. We got that all exposed and I think they. I'm not sure if they got it all cut out and put back in today or not, but uh, we tried to do that with as minimal interruptions of service as possible. Usually we only. We're only out for a couple of hours. We sent out notifications that could say it could be up for two days, but it's usually only a couple of hours, so.
Came knocking on the doors.
Yeah.
On Sunday.
Yep, yeah, we wanted to give you a heads up that we were going to start Monday, so rather than just show up Monday and like, hey, we're going to cut your water off. Uh, we're also asking Votsparga to look at the sewer work, because we can include that in the KDOT amount. And since we're under that grant amount, we can sort of. Be a little bit more flexible with that project a little bit. So, uh, we're going to try to maximize the KDOT dollars and then, so. Uh, Network Kansas, we went out to their central retreat and won an award. Very exciting, yeah. Uh, this, this bad boy is actually to the. It's a three, kind of a three-way partnership award. Hillsborough Development Corporation is the actual owner, uh, or the holder of the Network Kansas. Uh, designation here, but it's for the city, uh, Hillsborough Development Corporation and uh, the. I don't think you can break it. Uh, Tabor College, the Center for Entrepreneurship is, is kind of a co, cohort with that too. Uh, pretty excited to get that. It was for innovation and working as a countywide. And we actually did Marion E-Community won the kind of co-award with that too. So, uh, it just kind of shows that we work together a lot. We've done a lot of co-programming this last year, and so we're excited to kind of keep that moving and, and working through the Center for Entrepreneurship. Uh, fleet management, we actually met with our account manager this week, or today, actually before this meeting. Uh, got all the vehicles kind of covered. We've reviewed in our original discussion. They should start kind of coming through. We don't really have a final ETA. We had some build dates. But some other things aren't really done yet. Uh, we talked a lot about sort of how that transition works, where we go with selling our vehicles. Uh, I think that the Jesse Hebert is going to want to potentially look at selling our police cruisers to the sheriff's office, which I think would be a good idea. And we can kind of get into the ins and outs of why that's a good idea, uh, in a little bit more detail when we move forward with that, but. Um, I think we're, we're moving forward with it and it's kind of just been sort of a thing that we're, we're getting through. Um, it's been interesting and I don't think anybody really understands the fundamental or. How it actually functions until you get into it and kind of look at it and see it. Uh, but we've talked a lot about what that looks like, so. Uh, planning commission, we've got a plat for the AMPI building. We're going to replat that. Uh, kind of talked about that briefly. Uh, we've got this issue with taxation through the public, uh, for the land bank and then building that rent part of it out, so. Uh, we're hoping to get that replatted. Uh, that process is going to get moving forward and you will of course have a part in that too. Um, so that planning commission work start here pretty quick. Uh, Flaherty Regional Council, they received their planning grant from the EPA, which is awesome because we were written into that grant, um, even before we actually. Were members of, of Flaherty Regional Council, so it was good. Uh, and so it's going to be, some of the things that they're going to be doing with that are some planning. They've got some. Groundfill money and some other things to do some environmental studies. So, uh, I think it's going to be a really cool project. We're really excited to be able to be part of that. Um, at the next meeting, that, their, their CEO asked me to come present about strategic planning, so we're going to. Go up and present about strategic planning and kind of how that works and why it's a good idea. And hopefully Lou, I think is going to come with me and. Uh, we're going to talk about that and hopefully can assist, push some of our other members in that group to, to start doing that themselves, so. Kind of speaking of our strategic planning, having a little bit of a problem nailing down a date in June. Everybody's got something going on. It's really tough. Um, so we may end up looking at doing something a little bit later in the summer, um, until I can kind of nail everybody down. Uh, I did hear about a grant at the Network Kansas thing today that they'll actually pay for an administrator, a third party person to come out and. Work with you. K-State does that. That's part of Network Kansas now, so there may be another, another option for a facilitator. Colin Hanson from KPP has agreed to do it, but it may be more than he bargained for, uh, originally, so we'll see. Uh, but that might be an option too. Uh, and then I wanted to let you know, we got a state champion swimming proclamation coming up. Lauren Vogt, she's, she is.
Awesome.
Uh, this is her second year in freestyle, fifty yard freestyle. This is her second state championship. She also won the hundred yard butterfly, so. She's, she's great. Uh, she's really good at it and she's the only sophomore, so. Uh, we're going to have her come in for a proclamation like we do for every other state championship. Um, she, her, her schedule is super busy too. Uh, so it won't be till August sixth, but I just want to let you know that that's, that's what we're going to be doing there. Um, Danielle and I sat in. We had a, a rating call for our bond issue. Greg Barnberg sat with us and we went through with S and P. It was mostly harmless. I always tell. Danielle, it feels like a, like a quiz or something, like you've got to stand there and explain the economy of your community and all this stuff. And they, they were very nice and they always are, but it just is like anxiety inducing. Um, but I think it went well. Greg thought it, did handle it really well, so we're looking to maintain that A rating. Uh, we'll actually know that. Uh, next Tuesday, so. Uh, and then Jesse had mentioned some opioid settlements. We've got another one coming up. Kroger is settling out, but we have to opt into that. So we're going to be opting in to get that. I don't think we're going to get a ton out of that one, but. You know, they, they've just sort of set, as they settled, we sort of get these things. We're part of the state settlement, so we get little chunks here and there. And that's how we pay for things like those ADs, so that's uh, something that's coming down the pipe too, so. Uh, that's all I had, sir.
No questions from that. So then we're going to move into our final public comment opportunity. See anybody with us? Nobody along that test? So, we're going to close that public comment opportunity. And now we're going to move into council comments.
I don't have anything to answer.
I have everything. Good job.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you. Um, I guess, can we, those are private matter with Lou? Does he want it?
Oh, he just had some help. Uh, he had some help testing today and that's why he's not here. Everything went really well.
Okay, that's good. Um, as we noticed, I am filling in for Mayor Lou. Alright, so with that, I wish him a speedy recovery and there's no more council comments. So I just adjourned the meeting. Alright, I adjourned this city council meeting. Thank you, everybody.